Meeting to order for the City Council meeting of January 16, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo is absent. Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Patino?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, we have two requests to speak. I have Jeremy Mace, followed by Isaac Beruman. Mr. Mace?
Honorable Mayor, City Council and city staff. I'm Jeremy Mace, First Vice President of the Santa Maria Firefighters Association, and I'm here before you tonight to address the lack of action by city staff in the ongoing negotiations process. One hundred days ago, the Firefighters Union and the city began negotiations. After only two meetings, the city provided a last, best, and final offer, which was unanimously rejected by my membership. On December 19th, we communicated that message and provided our last, best, and final offer to you. I am here tonight asking City Council to vote on our proposal and report the results of the vote to our membership, the Firefighters Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mace. Isaac Beruman?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Isaac Beruman. I've been a community member since forty-plus years. I've got many businesses in Santa Maria, and they've always been good to me. I'm here to support the city employees. I mean, they work for you. Politics aside, they're your employees, and they are our community also employees. As a businessman, I'm a realtor now. I've got many friends, many friends. Sometimes they tell me, I don't have a down payment, they don't have this, they don't have that, childcare. So every penny right now counts. They're not asking for much, they're not going to get rich off of it. I'm pretty sure you have it. What I can tell you is, as a businessman, I always invest my money where it counts. So in this case, they are your employees. So you are the boss. You gotta treat people right. Every single time when I got my business, I noticed, if I treat my employees good, trust me, they would work better, give them better life for them. So let's not get into politics. Let's get into the humanity of our employees, members of our community. That way, they succeed, they would come back to us. It's just business. You give them more money, the money come back to us as a city. So let's put everything aside and consider. Just went to the store yesterday, five minutes, I spent fifty dollars. Cost of living is very high. Houses is very high. State mandate houses, that's by the state. I understand that we can build as many houses as we want, but who's going to buy it? Our people, they cannot afford it. So somebody else will buy it, somebody else will pay taxes somewhere else, not here. So let's consider it. It's just a common sense deal here, which is, politics never a common sense, but I appreciate you think about your relatives, your friends, and it's all winners. Thank you very much. Isaac Beruman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beruman. Madam Clerk, would you please notice that Mr. Escobedo has arrived? Okay. The City Council will now recess to a closed session and will reconvene to the regular meeting portion of the agenda at 5:30 PM. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Ms. Villagrana, and she would, would you mind, oh, she's in front, usually in back. Would you mind raising your hand? Please ask her for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta. La intérprete es la, este tarde es la señora Villagrana. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of January 16, 2024. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Mayor Protam Soto is absent. Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to give the closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. With respect to the two items, conference with labor negotiators and real property negotiators, instructions were provided to the negotiators with respect to the public employment recruitment city manager. Information was provided to council. No further report is necessary.
Thank you. And the first item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation and for respect for life. Whereas over thirty-five years, the Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life have been celebrating respect for life in Santa Maria. Whereas it is imperative that residents of the community defend human life at all ages and conditions of dependency and protect the disabled and handicapped and those defenseless in every way. And whereas this year's Life Walk 2024 is scheduled for Sunday, June 23rd, at 2:00 in the City Hall courtyard, and the respect for life is being celebrated January 21st through January 27th. And whereas respect for life is a vital issue that invites full public awareness, now therefore I, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognize the week of January 21st through January 27th, 2024, as Respect for Life Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage full awareness of the issue. In witness thereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal in the City of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto the sixteenth day of January, 2024. And here to receive this is John Lundgren, President of Right to Life of the Central Coast.
Mayor Patino, council members, Happy New Year 2024, huh? Always a pleasure to attend the City Council meeting here in Santa Maria. We again are very grateful for your kindness in regarding the sanctity of human life as a valued, protected, and proclaimed here in this great city. We humbly accept this proclamation with the knowledge that not every council member agrees with it, but are professional in the process. We say thank you. There's good news to report. In the New York Times last November, there was an article in a section called "The Upshot" that asked the question, and I quote, "How many abortions did the post-Roe bans prevent?" The first estimate of births since Dobbs found that almost a quarter of women who have gotten abortions carried their pregnancies to term, close quote. In another report, a CNN article stated that fourteen states have either totally banned or are near totally banning abortions. Well, this is what our founding fathers had in mind for a free society. Let the people decide the direction of the country, and they have. As we look ahead to 2024, we look forward to the celebration of life here in the United States and locally here in Santa Maria. As you may know, for the past twenty-five-plus years, we have celebrated life, having a community walk on the third Sunday of every January in conjunction with the then proclamation from President Ronald Reagan in 1984, that the third Sunday in January would be called Sanctity of Human Life Sunday, always a Sunday before the anniversary of Roe versus Wade on January 22nd. Well, this year, our board voted in the last board meeting to move the walk to Sunday before the Dobbs decision this year as a reflection of the importance of that decision and a reminder that Roe is no more. Praise the Lord. I want to extend an invitation to the City Council to attend and offer a few words in June. With that, I would like to bless the City Council with some mementos from our organization. First, I would like to give to our esteemed mayor a life-size model of a twenty-week unborn baby named Eve. This model is an exact shape, size, and weight of a twenty-week unborn baby and will remind you of the delicate nature of this gift from our Creator. Thank you, Mayor Patino, for your unwavering support over the years for the cause of life. I also would like to give the remaining council members each a model of a twelve-week unborn baby that is also the exact shape, size, and weight of a ten-to-twelve-week baby. There is also a card that explains in detail the stages of an unborn baby in the womb. Thank you, and may God bless each and every one of you.
And I have two requests to speak on this issue, Ms. Pam Gates and Cliff Solomon.
Good evening, Ms. Gates.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Pam Gates, and I'm here to make public comment on the inappropriateness of the City Council to make a proclamation in support of Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life. While I would believe, we would all agree, quote, "It is important that residents of the community defend life at all ages," et cetera. But I ask you, who gets to decide what that means? The person experiencing any of these issues or some outside group that wants to impose its beliefs on everyone else? And who is the Central Coast Citizens for Family and Life? There's not the same name that was given by this person who came up to accept. I always attempt to understand others' viewpoints because I think that's an important aspect of healthy democracy. Yet I can find no mention of this group on the internet, not who they are or what they stand for. I even searched the Santa Maria Times. If they've been doing this for over thirty-five years, why is there no public presence? I also question if this group is really speaking for respect for all life. I did find some mention of Life Walk 2024, but it seems that that's focused on pro-life and anti-abortion. Where is the transparency that's not in the proclamation? As the gentleman just said, let the people decide. Well, California did decide, and in Santa Barbara County, sixty-eight percent of voters approved Proposition 1 to protect women's reproductive health rights. Double the no votes. And this is a constitutional amendment as of December 2022. In closing, I'll quote the proclamation one last time. "Respect for life is a vital issue that invites full public awareness." Through its proclamation, the other one tonight, on human trafficking, the City Council provides an opportunity to inform the public on an issue that deserves attention and public discussion. The proclamation for Central Coast Citizens endorses one group's opinion, cloaked in statements that we could agree or disagree on if we were given the full story. Thank you.
Mr. Solomon? Good evening, Mr. Solomon.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I'm addressing you today to express my displeasure with the Right to Life proclamation. While the proclamation may express the opinions of some, it is inappropriate for the Santa Maria City Council to be endorsing this public statement. The proclamation seems to assume a universal agreement on what constitutes respect for life. However, this is a complex issue with diverse perspectives influenced by personal beliefs, cultural backgrounds, and ethical considerations. It's important to ensure that such proclamations respect the diversity of all who live in Santa Maria and does not impose a particular viewpoint on all residents. The proclamation also ignores the fact that the state of California is the national leader in the protection of women's rights and the safeguarding of abortion rights for women. On November 8th, 1922, California voters overwhelmingly passed Proposition 1, which amended the Constitution of California to explicitly protect the right to abortion. That proposition prohibits the state of California from denying or interfering with a woman's right to choose or obtain an abortion prior to fetal viability or after fetal viability to protect the life or health of the woman. In conclusion, I want to point out that the month of March is Women's History Month. I would hope that the Santa Maria City Council adopt a proclamation for that event. Thank you.
Next, we have another presentation, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I read this, I just want to say that I hope people pay particular attention to the language here and understand that this person that could be involved with trafficking could be your neighbor, could be a relative, could be a very good friend, and you may not even know that this is happening. It's just happening right in front of you. So listen carefully. All proclamations don't carry this level of, well, they're all important. I don't want to say that they're not important, but they don't carry the impact that this seems to carry, certainly for me anyways. So this has to do with Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas, human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including California, within the victims. Within, the victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including, but not limited to, commercial sex acts and other services that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, due to its isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. It is estimated that more than twenty-eight million people around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas, human trafficking victims face cruelty that has no place in a civilized world, it is a crime that can take many forms and one that tears our social fabric, tears our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas, increased education about our identity, identifying human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to using all applicable laws and resources for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those engaged in it. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to home than one might think. That California ranks number one in the country for reporting human trafficking cases, and that Santa Barbara County is home to hundreds of survivors of trafficking and exploitation. And whereas, Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role all Santa Barbara County residents play in preventing, reporting, and adjudicating these hideous crimes. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of January, 2024, as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria. In witness whereof, Mayor Patino has set her hand to have and cause the seal of the great city of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto the sixteenth day of January, 2024, and signed by our Mayor, Alice Patino. And here to accept this is the Executive Director of North County Rape Crisis, Ann McCarty.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. As Councilmember Cordero stated, my name is Ann McCarty, and I am the Executive Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. But tonight, I come humbly before you as a member of an amazing group of individuals working in Santa Barbara County on the issue of human trafficking. This tremendously well-skilled collective of organizations with members from law enforcement, supportive service providers, and community advocates, to name a few, take on this seemingly monumental task of dealing with what is the scourge of human trafficking. Our teams provide leadership, make data-driven decisions, train relentlessly to raise public awareness, focus on investigations and prosecutions, and most importantly, we all take a victim-centered, trauma-informed approach to providing the most comprehensive services to all survivors. None of these collaborations would be possible without the efforts of each entity, and we all do it with a passion. As January is nationally recognized as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, being recognized by the City of Santa Maria with this proclamation sends a loud message to all that you as leaders are fed up with what is underbelly known as trafficking. Lending your voice to our work is powerful, and we are incredibly grateful. Risk factors for trafficking have been exasperated in recent years. Loss of income due to the pandemic, rising housing costs, food insecurities, you name it, an exploiter will use any tactic to trap and enslave a victim for their own personal gain. Truth be told, traffickers think that there's less risk in trafficking people than there is in trafficking drugs. But let it be known that in our county, our county has taken a hard line in its approach to finding and prosecuting such cases, and sadly, the reality is that there are individuals routinely being bought and sold for commercial sex or unpaid bonded labor within our county and within the City of Santa Maria. Our path forward is only possible through all of our collective efforts. Since 2017, when we began collecting the hard data, there have been 243 human trafficking investigations. Since 2017, 217 new survivors have been identified, with twenty-seven percent of them being minors and an additional thirty-three percent between the ages of eighteen to twenty-four. Additionally, forty-two percent were Santa Barbara County residents prior to being trafficked, and ninety-one percent of them were sex trafficked. Trafficking is insidious, and it knows no boundaries. The bottom line of tonight is simple. The City of Santa Maria is integral to our work. Without leaders such as you helping us shine a light on human trafficking and making a profound statement that not in my city, those that perpetrate these crimes would be led to believe that you are complacent, but you aren't. And we need for you to continue to be our thought partners, our eyes, our ears, and the leadership we need moving forward. Continue to take a stand. Traffickers like to work in the background. They bank on people being quiet, and they think that victims are nameless. We're here to state that none of that is true, and together we will continue to make a difference. So thank you for this honor, for this proclamation, for recognizing the work that we all do in Santa Barbara County and within the City of Santa Maria.
Thank you, Ms. McCarty, for all the work you do. The next item on the agenda this evening is a presentation of the businesses of the quarter, and Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be presenting the certificates along with the Chamber CEO, Glenn Morris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening, Mr. Morris. It's a pleasure to be back with you again. As we start our third year of the partnership between the city and the chamber in identifying and recognizing some of our wide range of businesses, this year we're going to be focusing on small businesses in our community. Tonight, we bring two of them to your attention. I'd like to start by I'd like to start by inviting Benjamin Davalos from Casa Bonita Furniture, if he can get through the crowd, if he's there. There he is. Benjamin, you'll join me up front. As he's coming up, let me just tell you briefly about Casa Bonita Furniture, located out here just about a mile and a half down the road, right? On Main Street. Business was formed in 2019. They currently have three employees, and it's a small, family-owned business servicing not just Santa Maria, but the entire Central Coast with great prices on quality furniture, and they're committed to providing a great service to their customers. Not just an advocate for business, but a previous customer, I can attest to do a great job. Casa Bonita, although they are small in numbers, they are active in our community. They stay active and involved in organizations like the Chamber. They are a sponsor of the St. Jude's Children's Hospital Telethon each year. They are a proud sponsor of the Elks Rodeo. And interestingly, they continue to be a sponsor of a local athlete and former Olympian, Carlos Valerias, who many of us remember celebrating his achievements over the years. So, Mayor and members of the Council, it's my pleasure to present to you our first business of the quarter for 2024, Casa Bonita Furniture.
Well, first of all, I want to go ahead and thank everyone who made this happen. It's an honor for me to be recognized as a small business owner. It is very important, I think, for many of us, as small business owners, to be recognized this way. Gives us that strength to continue moving forward and letting us know that we are doing a good job in the community, as he mentioned. We try to stay active in the community as much as we can, and we believe that being part of this community just brings us all together. And I don't know what else to say. I'm just thankful. Thank you so much, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Our second business this quarter, we're going to stay kind of in the home furnishings arena. If Sean and Sunday Ballas are here, they're going to try and make their way forward through the crowd. As they come up, let me introduce their business, which is Budget Blinds of Santa Maria. They have been in business since 2012, currently have five employees.
Yeah.
Today? All right, we're at five. And I thought it was interesting that they've noticed in particular, they've seen good, solid growth over the last five years. As you'll recognize, a couple of those last five years have not been easy years to be a small business, and so I think that's something they should be very proud of. Again, a family-owned and operated business, providing window coverings to the communities in the Santa Maria Valley and around the Central Coast, offer free in-home consultations where they can come in and help you customize the solution for your home. Very involved in the community as well, and one of the items that they particularly wanted to highlight is that they have been part of the Hats for Hope program. Many of you in the community are aware of that local charity and the good work that they do as well, so thank you for being supportive of that group. So, Mayor, our second small business this year is Budget Blinds of Santa Maria.
I don't have much to say, so my mom's Sunday, my dad's George. We opened up about 2012. My wife and I have started taking over, so yeah, we're just trying to grow and learn and learn how to be part of the community and doing what we can do, and all while trying to run a small business and raise a family, so just like everybody else. But thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
They mean so much to our community. And I know the Chamber does a big push every year to get people to buy locally and to buy people from small businesses, but thank you very much. Next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items. Close session items or matters not on the printed agenda this evening, unless otherwise directed, speakers will have three minutes to comment. So, I have Matt Chirkop, followed by Nicole Bryant, followed by Daniel Vezzi, followed by Cody Gabel.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff. As you know, I'm Matt Chirkop. I'm president of the Firefighters Association. I come before you tonight to reiterate the message that I conveyed to you on December 16th. We believe City Executive Staff is not treating your firefighters fairly. The city has offered two proposals that fail to keep up with inflation, fail to keep up with the local market, and fail to provide a living wage to your firefighters. Your firefighters are over 14% behind when compared to the local market. Your firefighters are among the lowest-paid firefighters in the tri-county area. I'm going to repeat that. Your firefighters are among the lowest-paid... ...form and is not being used to support fair, market-based wages. The community asked for an enhancement to public safety twice. Measure you answered. It's time to fulfill that obligation. The message from labor in Santa Maria is consistent: we have had enough and are demanding fair, market-based pay. Low wages have plagued the workforce while its executive-level staff continue to be handsomely paid. Not too long ago, this council approved an updated salary schematic that included a new executive consultant position with an hourly wage of $123.48 per hour. This is your opportunity to do what is right, to not repeat the mistakes of previous city councils. This is your chance to be on the right side of history. This is your chance to be known as the city council that supports its workforce in more than just words. You had an opportunity on December 16th to see the families and the children that your decisions affect. You have the opportunity to observe the majority of the city's workforce, represented here before you today, expressing their sincere frustration with the lack of support. The Firefighters Association stands in solidarity with SEIU and all of the city's workforce to support a fair, market-based wages. This is the time to invest in your workforce. This is the time to show the workforce that you stand with us, and the community deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chirkop. Nicole Bryant, followed by Daniel Vezzi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Nicole Bryant, and I'm the field representative that represents for SEIU Local 620, who represents your hard-working General Unit Employees here at the City of Santa Maria. I stand up in front of you today seeking fair wages and a good contract for our members. The City of Santa Maria has fallen significantly behind over the last several years in wages. Over the last two years, our members endured record-breaking inflation with minimal wage adjustments. Minimum wage rose 16.3%, and the Consumer Price Index was combined 11.1% during the term of their last contract, during which our members only saw a total of 5.5% cost-of-living increase. No one could have predicted the economic suffering at the time, but your remaining city employees have endured just the same with the same goal: to proudly serve this community. Neighboring public agencies have risen to the occasion and have met the current economic situation with significant contracts recently for General Unit Employees such as ours, with 10% to 12% cost-of-living adjustments over two years, while our members and your employees here at the City of Santa Maria have fallen further and further behind. More and more employees are leaving for comparable, higher-paying agencies in other cities by the day. This is just one of the factors contributing to the exorbitant number of funded vacant positions here at the City of Santa Maria. From information provided to us by the city, there are approximately 215 funded vacant positions citywide, or 20% of the funded FTEs, a value of which is over $18 million in savings for the city that gets redistributed to pension liabilities, the LEAF fund, and capital projects each year. All while, positions are not being filled, and our members are being told to do more with less and absorb the duties of those vacant positions. Our members come to work each and every day to make this city run, to ensure that there is clean water, the trash gets picked up, they maintain the grounds and safety of our parks, and serve as our community's youth and senior citizens with countless programs at the rec center and library. This city works because they do. They deserve to be able to feed their families, secure housing near the community they serve, and put gas in their cars without worrying if they will have enough to make it through the month. The City of Santa Maria is no longer an employer of choice on the Central Coast, but it can be again, but we need your help. To achieve this, our members need higher competitive wages. Our efforts with this successor contract is to help stop the hemorrhaging of employees and retain your workforce and our members. We want to make the City of Santa Maria desirable employer again, and to be able to do that and attract and keep your talented employees. SEIU stands in solidarity with the Fire Association. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Daniel Vezzi, followed by Cody Gabel. I hope I pronounced that right. Good evening, Mr. Vezzi.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Daniel Vezzi. I'm a long-term city employee with 33 years, just celebrated yesterday, January 15th, 1991. I'm also the president of our SEIU Local 620, Chapter for the Miscellaneous Group. Our union represents city employees from City Hall, Finance, Billing, IT Department, Library, Public Works, Engineering, Community Development, Parks and Recs, Utilities, Water, Wastewater, Solid Waste, Landfill Collections, and Police and Fire Administration. I have been to many city council meetings over the years. I am standing here again tonight with my peers for what we believe is a problem that needs to be solved. I feel we are once again at a place where the city council and our hard-working folks of this city need to put our thoughts together and differences aside and have discussion so we can iron out a fair cost-of-living adjustment, especially with the last few years of high inflation. I feel like we are once again being asked to operate under that lean and mean theory and work off the do more with fewer employees mentality. The city is betting on vacant positions to cover the general fund budget and put money away in our LEAF fund, paid for future capital projects and unfunded pension costs, basically working off our city backs, employees' backs. Also, all three revenue sources for the general fund, number one, sales tax has increased for fiscal year 2023-2024, and the first quarter is up 4.9%. Property tax went up 11.8%, and TOT tax went up 35%. Again, all we ask is for a fair and deserved contract. The cost of everything has gone up, fuel costs continues to stay high, but our take-home salaries have not. We are not keeping up with the times. We remain under market price compared to other cities, counties, and districts. Some of our job classifications range from 13% up to greater than 20%. City employees from our group and management are leaving in this employer to nearby agencies, private sector, and other states for more money and smaller workloads. We train them, and then we lose them the next day. Finally, just want to say that we are reasonable and dedicated people that come to work every day to serve our community.
It was close, Madam Mayor.
Oh, well, thank you. Followed by Luis Magallón. Thank you.
Yeah, well, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Council. My name is Cody Graybell. I'm a senior planner with the city. I work in the Community Development Department, and I'm a union steward as well. And tonight, I proudly represent my fellow coworkers. Last four years working with the city has been a very positive experience for me. I get to spend time with great people and develop new skills in my profession year in and year out. And tonight, I'm just going to briefly highlight some of the responsibilities of the Community Development Department and the positive impacts that they generate for the community. Some of these responsibilities include helping developers with building permits and entitlements for new projects, inspecting buildings for safety purposes, assisting new businesses in receiving licenses, applying for grants to receive funding for city initiatives, working with tenants and landlords to address code enforcement cases, tackling the unprecedented housing crisis we all face in California, and helping implement the city's vision of a new downtown just footsteps away from City Hall. And all the union membership is asking for tonight is a fair contract that addresses the steep cost of living that we all face on the Central Coast. And I want to end on a personal note tonight. My wife and I, we just started a family last year, and we had our first son, and I can confirm all the sentiments of the union membership about how expensive everything is right now and how hard it is for families financially on the Central Coast. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Luis Magallón, followed by Natalie Heredia, followed by Joe Hall. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. My name is Luis Magallón. I am a civil engineer here at the City of Santa Maria. As a lifelong resident, returning to serve this community has been an honor. But I haven't just come home, I've dedicated myself to its future. Over the past few years, I've been a part of a great team and projects to improve the daily lives of our residents. My commitment comes with sacrifices, though. In order to return, my family and I sold our home and squeezed into a converted garage. We dream of being able to own a home in this town that we are so proud of to live in and be a part of, but with our current salaries, that dream feels really distant. Investing in our workforce in engineers like myself and all my other coworkers you see here means retaining talent to tackle these critical challenges. It means a Santa Maria where everyone can thrive. We're not asking for handouts, but a fair raise, and that would reflect your dedication and secure our future here. Together, we can build a brighter Santa Maria. Thank you for your support.
Natalie Heredia, followed by Joe Hall, followed by Daryl Scheck. Good evening, Ms. Heredia.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Natalia Heredia, and I am a member of the SEIU Local 20. I also am a dedicated city employee who has worked for the city and served the community for nine and a half years. I stand in front of you today in support of my coworkers and this city, requesting council's consideration for fair wages. The cost for a fair and reasonable COLA for our unit would not solely be funded by the general... would not solely be funded by the general fund. One-third of the cost is funded through enterprise funds. Twenty-five percent of the remaining is funded through special revenue funds. The amount remaining from the general fund would be mere pennies when compared to building a multimillion-dollar performing arts and conference center. Inflation on the central coast continues to rise. As a single mother of two, the stress brought on by the challenges to provide for myself and my family has impacted my mental and physical health as well. I know I do not stand alone in these trying times, as you can see. These exceptional times require an exceptional response. I know this increase will not fully eradicate the full impact of rising costs, but it is my hope that the additional support will help us afford more of our daily necessities. Council can use this opportunity to demonstrate your care and concern for your city employees and their families by providing us a fair and substantial wage increase. I know this will make a difference not only for myself, but for all city employees and their families. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Joe Hall, followed by Darrell Scheck. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mayor Patino, council members, and city staff. My name is Joe Hall and I've been employed with the city for seven years now, working in the Public Works Facilities Department. I have represented Public Works operation as a union steward for the past three years. I have lived in the Santa Maria Valley for thirty years now and have seen the city grow into a big city while maintaining a hometown feel. I've been married to my beautiful wife for twenty-two years, who could not be here because she is currently working an evening job to help with our family bills, too. Together, we have raised three awesome kids who are all productive young adults, two of which are currently in college, which I help pay for. Like many employees, I've had to supplement my income from the city with an additional job. On average, I put in an additional twenty to thirty hours per week working away from my family to help pay for the expenses that my city's salary does not cover. With the direction of the economy has been going, it's becoming harder and harder for my coworkers and myself to meet the basic needs of what takes, what it takes in today's world. For as much as the city has grown, the wages for the general workforce we are receiving have not kept pace with the rising costs of living on the central coast. This has led to significant turnovers and vacant positions. In the time that I've been at the city, I have witnessed countless turnovers in my own department and other departments due to lower wages. These good workers are leaving to go work for companies and public agencies who are paying higher wage and offering the same, if not better, benefits than what we offer in the city. And currently, I know multiple city workers actively seeking employment elsewhere due to our below-market pay scale here in the city. It's frustrating from, to me, the time the city has invested in these workers, the skills that they bring to the city, and not receiving the pay they deserve. Then losing them to agencies or companies because of the out-of-market pay scale they are in. If the city is truly healthy, succeeding, and growing, which I agree with, shouldn't our workforces' pay reflect that, too? Help our workers succeed and grow in the same manner. Thank you for your time considering this manner and the service you provide to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Scheck.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and City Council. My name's Darrell Scheck, Executive Director for SEIU Local Six Twenty, the union representing many of your fine employees here today at the City of Santa Maria. Our members and fire are here in large numbers today, not because we want to be here, because we have to be here. Inflation over the last two years has ravaged their paychecks. What may have seemed like reasonable wage increases two years ago did not pan out or translate into something sustainable to our members. Just as the city faces increasing cost, so do our members, except we have fewer resources. We have achieved reasonable cost of living increases in other jurisdictions where we represent rank-and-file employees. To keep up, this city needs to follow suit. This city has always prided itself on doing more with less. Our members have been doing that for a very long time. Vacancies abound, work is not getting done due to insufficient staffing. This is not about politics or ideology. This is about ensuring that the city remains competitive in retaining a talented workforce. Members are not asking for something unreasonable. They just want what's fair. And all we're asking for is a cost of living increase or adjustment that will enable them to keep their heads above water. We're not coming in here pounding the table and asking for the sky. We're asking for realistic increases that take into account past inflation. A fair cost of living offer can get this over the finish line so we can continue to make this city a success and drive future growth and opportunity for all, including helping small businesses. And thank you for hearing all of our members' important messages. They and the Firefighters Association would not be here today unless this was absolutely necessary. We hope that you'll do the right thing in your deliberations and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have another slip for Luis Magallón, but I am assuming there's only one of you. Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of Trauma Center Program Update, to be made by the Trauma Program Medical Director, Dr. Soh Home, and Trauma Program Manager, Lisa Avalo.
Thank you very much, Mayor Patino and City Council. I'm Sue Anderson, the President and CEO at Marion, and we're honored to be here tonight to just talk a short presentation about the trauma services at Marion. Do I need to stand back a little? Okay.
Yeah, you can wait about a minute.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have one more speaker for public comment.
Oh, we do? Oh, I'm sorry.
Isaac Berman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott Bramson. I'm sorry, I apologize.
No need for an apology. Good evening, mayor, council. This is probably the biggest crowd I've ever spoken in front of, so bear with me here. But a lot's been said from everyone, I think, in the, for the majority of the city workforce. You know, like, I'm not the guy to come up here and typically speak on pay. Grew up, grew up actually in San Inez Valley. My whole family's worked in the trades. I'm the first person to serve in public, public safety and generally my whole family. And what I can tell you is this, we're feeling not getting the pay raises. We work for probably one of the busiest fire departments in the county, if not the busiest. When I, when I got hired here in two thousand and eighteen, I remember sitting in my job interview, bragging that I wanted to work for the busiest fire department in the county, running nine thousand calls a year. We've upped that call volume by about thirty-three percent. Like, we are working hard every single day. Every single one of these people that are sitting out here in front of you want to be here. The only way that they're going to be able to stay here is, is to get brought up to an equitable market rate. I think a lot of the offers that you guys are giving to us don't even cover the cost of inflation. We literally go to work every day and we try and figure out which grocery store we're going to shop at because everything's gotten so expensive, it's that bad. So, I ask that on behalf of the firefighters and everyone else that's here, you guys really take that into consideration because we're hurting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bramson. Okay, Mr. Berman, you spoke earlier at public comment.
He submitted a second slip for open session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Well, good evening, again, Madam Mayor, City Councils. I'd like to speak for our community and a community member, also a business owner. I know a lot of small businesses in San Maria, been here for forty years or more. And some are closed, some are closing. The reason for that is, of course, they're not selling. Of course, cost of living, you have to invest your money somewhere else or buy food, pre-rent, mortgage. Estate mandate, a lot of houses, as we know. Well, we can build them, no problem, but who's going to buy them? That's another problem, right? It's a very simple problem. They, I don't know who have the right or the authority to passes, whatever they're asking. You hear all the data, thus, thus very transparent to me anyway. I didn't hear that many data until right now. And they are your employees to tap it off, your employees. You ever hear that? You're the pass. You got to invest on them. They better pay, they better work, they take care of their families. They take care of small business. I'm a small business owner, as many friends that I have, most are Latinos. They told me to speak for you guys. I said, listen, let them know that we are need business. So, take care of your employees and be considerate, be human. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Okay. Okay, Ms. Anderson?
Okay, we'll try this again.
Let's do this again.
I'm Sue Anderson and President of Marion and thank you for allowing us to come here tonight and educate the community a little bit about our trauma program. So, just to give a little background before I introduce Dr. Soh Home and Lisa, about three years ago, we frankly got tired of seeing ambulances come up to our heliport at Marion and people being helicoptered down to Cottage for trauma care when we knew we could take care of them in our emergency department. Additionally, you know, I don't know that the community realized it, but there were times when there were car accidents where one or two family members would be taken down to Cottage and the rest would be left at Marion, the lower-level traumas. And that divided families. We know a lot of our families maybe have one car and can't, going an hour out of their way to see their loved one was a hardship. So, we started on this journey and we basically put in everything that was required to be a trauma level two. What that required was that we have to have, basically, pretty much in-house twenty-four-hour trauma surgeons. We have to have anesthesiologists around the clock. We have to have an OR team around the clock. So, there was a lot invested in this program. And we, about a year and a half ago, we went through a survey with the American College of Surgeons. They came out and they certified us as a trauma level two center. We met all the qualifications. It then took our county about a year to implement, to recognize us as a trauma level two. It was very discouraging, in fact, because the county, instead of recognizing us as trauma level two and changing the flow of pattern of emergency services and trauma surgeon services, they decided to hire an outside consultant to take a look at both trauma programs and determine how the county should be divided. That took many, many months. And basically, the consultant came back and said the two trauma programs, the one at Cottage and the one at Marion, are, are very much the same and that the county should be divided in half. And so, the county made the decision on September nineteenth of this past year. They basically divided the county in half and everybody from north of Bulton, including Lompoc, come to Marion. Everyone else goes south to Cottage if you have a trauma. There's a little bit of difference in that for pediatric patients, but that's how, how it's handled. The consultant actually recommended that even Bulton area and some of that area, that it would be closer for the trauma patients to come to us. And with trauma, seconds matter, so it's really important that you get to the closest place. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Soh Home and to Lisa Avalo to talk about the program that we've developed here. And just to give you a little bit of background, Lisa Avalo has been with us for many years running our trauma program. In addition, she was a CalStar flight nurse. She knows firsthand about trauma care in our community. And then, Dr. Soh Home, we are so thrilled to have him join our team. He came to us from Temple University. He was the head of trauma at Temple University in Philadelphia and decided to make a move out west and we're very thankful that he did. And he's helped us really expand our program, hire new trauma surgeons, bring new surgeons to the areas. And with that, we, I'd like them to present our program.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for inviting us. I just wanted to go over a couple of the changes that took place and show you some of the maps regarding destination. So, as Sue said, the Level One and Level Two trauma centers are really identical. The care that we can provide initially for trauma patients is the same at Marion as it is at Cottage. So, it's really nice to know that we can keep people in the community close to home. This is a map that the county uses for destination. It includes trauma patients, patients that are suffering from strokes as well as STEMI or heart attack patients. If the ambulance picks them up in the pink zone at this time now, since the September nineteenth date, they're brought to Marion Hospital. If they're picked up anywhere in the blue zone, they're typically taken to Cottage Hospital. Prior to this, the trauma patients, as Sue said, even from the City of Santa Maria, Guadalupe.
Pink and blue colors can like collide. Can you explain what's, what does that mean? The green one and the one that it's like?
Where they, where they converge right there with the green line.
Where the two of them converge, it's almost equal distance to Marion or Cottage Hospital. If you want to get into a little bit of the nitty-gritty details of it, to take an ambulance over San Marcos Pass is really difficult. So, you know, there's a little more time there. The ambulance providers also typically like to come up to Marion because there's, there's a lot of stops along the way, a lot of resources along Highway one oh one, as opposed to going down the coastline. But that's where they two overlap. The dotted line that you'll see there is what the county's right now considering to be the division, with the green line being the proposed division. They still haven't been able to make a final decision on what this map should look like. So, people in the Los Olivos, Bulton, and San Inez area, it's a little bit in flux. We're not sure what they're going to do with that. They've thought about moving it to the green line. They've also thought about completely getting rid of the map and just saying the closest facility is where people, patients are going to, between Marion and Cottage.
Thank you.
Air transport prior to the change that Marion implemented with their care that we can provide, as well as the county decision, all patients were flown to Cottage, no matter where they were picked up from. This can be a lot, big problem because there is a lot of fog in the Santa Maria area. Many times, they wouldn't land at Cottage Hospital. They'd land at the Santa Maria, at the Santa Barbara Airport and then another ground transport over to Cottage Hospital. So, really, an extensive amount of time, if you consider being flown from Santa Maria. That's changed now and the helicopters are taking patients to either Marion or Cottage, whichever is closest. And that takes into account weather, landing sites. It's just the closest facility, so that's been a big change. And then, just to give you a little bit of idea about trauma centers, you're really fortunate to have. Marion does. And then, in Bakersfield and in Visalia are two other. Marion does. And then in Bakersfield and in Visalia are two other trauma centers, but again, similar to Sierra Vista and not quite the same level of care. So really, quite a distance, and Marion really did kind of fill in that big cap. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention is how Marion really is becoming a regional trauma center. More and more of the hospitals around us, San Elizabeth County, some of the hospitals over in the Bakersfield area, are starting to rely more and more on the capabilities of Marion and sending their patients to us. So we appreciate that. We're trying to take care of everybody as we can. It's a very busy hospital. But we're really proud of what we've put in place and what we're able to do now. And then I'll just give it to Dr. Sohome to kind of go over what plans we have and what you might see in the future.
Yeah, I don't have, I'm Ula Sohome. I'm the Director of Trauma at Marion and been here since May. And I'm really excited and proud to be a part of this organization, this excellent organization. And, and I always want to emphasize on what Sue and Lisa said. It's really so great to be able to, since September of last year, be able to, to keep the most severely injured patients at Marion, where they really belong. The, again, we are Level Two trauma center. There is a Level One, there is Level Two, there is Level Three, there is even a Level Four. Level One and Level Two is really no different in terms of capacity of taking care of the most severely injured patients. We have the same capacity at Marion to take, and knowledge to take care of these patients as our Level One trauma center down in Santa Barbara. And then just looking at that picture of the different trauma centers, you had, I don't know if I can go back there. Yeah. Again, you have Santa Barbara Cottage, Level One, and then you have Marion, that's the other blue star there, which is Level Two. Again, same capacity in taking care of severely injured patients. Marion is really strategically located there, getting more traumas from the north as the south. And we already can see an uptake in the numbers of patients that we take care of. So, any questions?
Thank you so much. That's, I didn't real, I think I've seen the map before, but I didn't, probably wasn't paying attention on how lucky we are to have that here, the Level Two.
I think it's great, and I think it's great that people moved from far away to bring us that level of care that we didn't always have at Marion. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Ms. Abalo. Appreciate it.
Next item this evening is the consent calendar. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? None?
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Watson.
At the request of Public Works, the intent is to pull 12D to a future, 12D1 to a future agenda.
12E?
12D1.
Till 12D1, okay. That'll be pulled.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Is that it?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, except for 12D1, which shall be pulled.
I have a second.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Baccalera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilman Brascavelo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next, we have item 13A, a public hearing regarding adopting a resolution to amend the Santa Maria Airport Business Park specific plan, introduction of an ordinance to amend the Santa Maria Airport Business Park specific plan, and adopting a resolution approving plan development permit, PD 2022-0017. Staff report is to be made by Principal Planner Frank Albro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a amendment to the Airport Business Park specific plan, and it is also a plan development permit for the development of self-storage facility. The airport-specific plan covers the area on the southern side of the airport. You can see it outlined in the yellow line here. The portion of the airport-specific plan that we're looking at this evening is highlighted in red. So this, this project before the council tonight is essentially a two-part project application. We have the specific plan amendment and the plan development permit. The specific plan amendment is a little bit different than what the council would have typically seen in the past. This specific plan amendment does not change the location or the area of land uses designated within the airport-specific plan. This specific plan amendment is to add a particular use to one of the existing general plan land uses and zones within the airport-specific plan today. The specific plan amendment will also revise the design of the Foxenwood Street section. And then lastly, as the second part of this application, we have the plan development permit. So this is the specific area that we're talking about within the project site. It's on the east, excuse me, the west side of Foxenwood, which is the street that divides the two parcels. And then the area where the general plan, or excuse me, the specific plan amendment will take place is here. So the portion of Foxenwood that's being amended or requested to be amended is in between Union Valley Parkway, which is on the south side, and here it is here, going up to the north to Foster Road. This portion of the property is approximately eight port four acres and has a designation of PD M1 PFA. And that stands for Plan Development, Light Industrial, Public Facilities, Airport. I will note that this is the only location within the airport-specific plan that this designation exists. So this is the only location where the change that's being proposed tonight will take place. And specifically, that change is to add heavy retail business as one of the permitted uses within this zone of the airport-specific plan. And the applicant is requesting this change in order to respond to some market input and market requests that the applicant has had in order to fulfill desires to place a heavy retail business in this location. So the definition of heavy retail business that is also being proposed to be added to the specific plan document is paraphrased on the slide. And it's simply a retail business that deals in goods that are much larger than you would typically see in a normal commercial zone. Bulk goods, perhaps furniture, perhaps nursery, as in gardening, nursery items, lumber, home improvement stores, that sort of orientation, farm markets or ranch supply and similar type businesses. And so the proposal would be to add heavy retail business as a line item to the list of permitted uses in this specific plan for this zone only, and then add that definition into the specific plan as well. And so the second part of the amendment to the specific plan, as I mentioned earlier, is the design of Foxenwood. So Foxenwood, again, is the street that divides the section of parcel or property that we're looking at tonight, runs through the middle and goes between Union Valley Parkway and Foster Road. And so that section is now surrounded by this zoning that, which is to the west. And then on the east side, which is also adjacent to Orchid Expressway, excuse me, is the airport's commercial zoning. And so the design of Foxenwood was meant to support industrial and lower-scale public facility developments. And as you can see here, it was a rather wide right-of-way, but actually a fairly narrow improved street section. So you had 102-foot right-of-way, and the street section curb-to-curb was actually only 60 feet wide. As you can see, there's one lane in each direction, a bike lane on-street in each direction. And then on either side of the right-of-way, you have a multipurpose path, an eight-foot-wide multipurpose path. So to better respond to the existing designations on either side of Foxenwood, the applicant is providing, or proposing, excuse me, a essentially what we would call a road diet, narrowing the actual right-of-way down to 82 feet, while at the still, at the same time, still providing one travel lane in each direction, one on-street bike path in each direction, and also one multi-use path outside of the paved area of the street. One of the other changes would be to take what was just going to be a center median and turn it into a center turn lane so vehicles can turn into the respective developments on either side of the street from that center lane and not impede through traffic. This is a proposal that has been reviewed by our Public Works Department, who is in support of this proposal to change this right-of-way configuration. Not only are they supportive of the design in terms of vehicular traffic, but also the narrowing of width of right-of-way for maintenance savings in the future for the city. So that concludes the portion of the presentation regarding the specific plan amendment. Now we move on to what is proposed for the plan development permit. This plan development permit is within the area that we discussed of the industrial public facility zone of the airport. This portion of the project site is approximately five acres of the overall 8.4 acres that we're dealing with tonight. The plan development permit is for a self-storage facility, mini warehouse is how our code refers to it. There'll be 12 self-storage buildings with 704 storage units. There is no caretaker's unit. There's no, nobody going to be living at this site. And it's going to be a self-sufficient facility that's going to be gated and monitored through video and other technological monitoring methods. As you can see here, the, first of all, I should orient the council, north is to the right of the page. Union Valley Parkway is here, and so west would be to the top of. Be no vehicular access onto Union Valley Parkway directly from this parcel. This proposal meets all the requirements for the zone and as specified in the airport-specific plan. The applicant is requesting one modification through the plan development permit. Plan development permit ordinance allows developers to request modifications to development standards, including parking, which is what is being requested here. Our city code requires one parking space for every 10 storage units, and that parking is to occur within the site. The applicant is requesting that that be dropped to one space, or lowered, I should say, to one space for every 15 units, which staff has analyzed and fully supports. Many of the other storage facilities that have been recently approved in the city have also gone through the plan development permit process and requested other, or requested similar reductions in required parking that were actually greater than the request that is being made here. We've not had any issues with those other facilities, so staff is very confident that there won't be any issues with parking overflowing from this site. Architecturally, it's metal construction. We do have brick wainscoting around some of the buildings. You see storefront glazing windows. The lower portion on the right-hand side of the slide will be the main office, where there'll be moving supplies, boxes, and so forth. This is the main entry gate off of Foxenwood. I will note that these upper levels are designed to appear that there are storage facility units behind the windows. This is a decorative facade only, and those will not be occupied units. Here's another location depiction. The lower depiction is what one would see from Union Valley Parkway. And the upper depiction is on the southeast corner of the complex. Again, those upper-level windows are meant to provide some variation and some interest for the building, but those are not actual storage units on those upper levels. As you can see here, there's varying roof heights, colors, and landscaping surrounding the site to help provide a setting for the building and also not provide a building with a monotonous roof plane or wall plane to provide some interest in that respect. I will note that the Planning Commission did see this plan development permit on their public hearing of December 6, 2023, and unanimously recommended the council approve the plan development permit. Lastly, I'll just mention that the specific plan amendment and the self-storage project has been reviewed for CEQA. The past airport project, including the more recent specific plan amendment that occurred a couple of years ago, a full environmental document was produced for that. All the provisions and all the qualities of this development fit within that past environmental documents review and don't pose any new or unforeseen impacts. Therefore, this specific plan amendment and the plan development permit can rely on those past CEQA documents, and no further review for environmental issues is required. So lastly, we have the recommendation. It's a three-part recommendation. Any specific plan amendment is required to be adopted through both a resolution and an ordinance. So we have both for the council this evening, a resolution and an ordinance. One is for general plan consistency. The other is for zoning consistency. And that pair of resolution and ordinance would be to adopt the heavy retail business as a permitted use in the public facilities, light industrial, airport district zone, and to modify the Foxenwood Lane roadway design. And then lastly, there's an- And then lastly, there's a resolution for the council's adoption of the plan development permit. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for questions, and I do want to note that the applicant is in the audience and is also ready to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Alvaro. Any questions from the council? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sir, you mentioned the term, and thank you for defining the term "heavy retail." I initially had the impression they're going to start selling cranes and things like that there. Is there anything in your, in the heavy retail definition that is going to create a, an excessive amount of noise for the, particularly for the neighbors, not only the neighbors, but the businesses that are close by? Is there anything that you know of that might go in there that would cause that to be a problem?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. We did narrow down the definition of heavy retail business. That is a term that's used in our zoning ordinance, Title 12. We reduced that down, eliminating things like tire shops and other things that might not fit well, particularly considering that there are residences on the south side of Union Valley Parkway, or to the south of Union Valley Parkway. The other thing I would like to note is that this zoning district retains its plan development permit overlay, so any new proposed use, just like the storage facility you're seeing tonight, will require its own plan development permit. And at that point in time, we will be reviewing it for its ability to fit in with the surroundings, including such things as not having excessive noise.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, I can't see anything more accommodating than a storage facility to be quiet for the neighbors, so I like the project.
Thank you. Ms. Aguilar Hernandez, did you have a question?
No.
Just go ahead, question?
Okay.
I'm ready to move forward.
Well, Madam Clerk, I'd like to open this up to a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Eric Justiceon with RRM Design Group, and pleased to be here tonight. I'd like to specifically thank staff for working with us over the past five years on the rezoning and environmental document, and now with our plan development permit. Also, a shout-out to the Santa Maria Airport District. They've been a great partner in helping us move this project forward. The specific plan for the area was adopted originally in 1995, almost 30 years ago, updated in 2008, and, you know, since that time, a lot of expectation has, you know, circulated in the community to create a real world-class business park and thriving economic development area in this area. We're really pleased to have partnered and have this opportunity to bring forth the very first incremental development in this portion of town that can... ...an area within the city of over 300 acres and about 3.5 million square feet of developable area ultimately, focused on R&amp;D facilities, corporate office, light industrial, ag tech, software, aviation, aerospace, businesses that are in demand in the area with the, you know, further development of commercial space at Vandenberg and Santa Maria occupying this very central location. So this, while a small project here, is really critical for the infrastructure that we're able to get in on Foxenwood, Foster, and Union Valley Parkway. As was said, this is really the first phase of this 28-acre area on the very southern portion of the city. The second phase will be a commercial shopping center on the east side of Foxenwood, between Foxenwood and Broadway, between Foster Road and Union Valley Parkway. We expect to bring that back in the next year for an application. As I said, the Planning Commission, and as Frank mentioned, reviewed this on December 6, and we had a great study session and then a public hearing with them, and were able to answer a lot of questions for that group and are pleased to receive their recommendation for approval. We're in support of the staff report, the conditions, and would love to get your support for this project tonight. If there's anything I can answer for you, I'm pleased to do so.
Any questions of Mr. Justiceon? Mr. Cordero?
Yes, go ahead.
I got to ask why it says Orchid Storage on the artist's rendition there. I assume that's not in stone, but most objected probably by people in Orchid.
Yeah, not cast in stone, just, I guess, the name that we have for it so far, but yeah, I'm taking suggestions for names here.
Call it Mike's place.
Okay, Mike's place, sounds good. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one other thing I neglected to do before this started is, from an ex parte point of view, I did speak with Eric on the telephone for about 10 minutes, and we didn't discuss really anything further than we've discussed here, so just so that you know.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Mr. Morris.
Madam Mayor, just want to take a quick moment and provide again, as I do often on these projects, a little perspective. 10 years ago, when I arrived in Santa Maria and looked at what the potential economic development opportunities were, there were really two significant, you know, areas of opportunity, I hate to call them low-hanging fruit because it's taken us 10 years to get here on both of them, but, and they were really the downtown and the airport-specific plan. The one creating kind of our community center, quality-of-life kinds of responses, and the other being a location where we could really begin to develop additional head-of-household jobs. You know, a storage unit is not the sexiest project to get excited about, but I think what's important in both of these cases is that these large areas of the community, because they're not, they haven't been prepared for development. There's no sewer lines, there's not the infrastructures in place, and what's essential is a first mover. Somebody's got to go first in each of these projects. We were able to find a developer to work with the city to go first in the downtown, and now we have a development team that's ready to go first on the airport-specific plan. And as Mr. Justiceon mentioned, this is the key that unlocks putting infrastructure underneath that street and being able to then welcome other businesses and then move further to the west as we continue to develop the industrial sector there. If you look around our city today, if you were to talk to any of our commercial realtors, the vacancy rate in industrial facilities today, particularly anything over about 10,000 square feet, is about as close to zero as you can get. There really is not a place where we can put a new Zodiac or a new Hardy diagnostic. The area south of the airport is where that can happen in the community, and we're really thrilled that 10 years later, we're picking that low-hanging fruit and we're ready to move forward. So appreciate your support on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak on this? Any other questions from the council? Okay, so I will, I'll close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Well, we have to do it in two. We have to adopt a resolution.
Do, can we, we have to do it separately?
Yes.
Because you have the ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I see.
I'll do it.
You could move staff recommendation number one.
So I move that we adopt resolution of general plan consistency to amend the Santa Maria Airport Business Park specific plan to add heavy retail business as a permitted land use in the plan development, light industrial, public facilities, airport, zone district, and to modify the Foxenwood Lane roadway design.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I remember this item was brought up to us, it was the Gorham Park, a couple of years ago, and we talked about, that was a very interesting conversation, and at that time expressed my, I voted against it, and for some, the reasons why I already expressed at that time, but I think that's, you know, not to move forward, and I've talked, I said, I met with the developers, I would like to disclose that, and I think that's time to make the best out of it. It's already there, so I think that's what was mentioned. You guys are going to be the first ones, so, and that's why I would like to express my support on this motion.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Reguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Okay, moving on to the next action item. Do I have a motion and a second?
I move that we introduce an ordinance for zoning consistency to amend the Santa Maria Airport Park specific plan to add heavy retail business as a permitted land use in the plan development, light industrial, public facilities, airport, zone district, and to modify the Foxenwood Lane roadway design.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Reguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And I move that we adopt a resolution approving a plan development permit, PD 2022-0017, for a 101, 450-square-foot mini warehouse facility on a 5-acre site within PDM-1 PFA Zone District of the Santa Maria Airport Business Park specific plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Reguilera Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Patino?
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. The next item will be a regular business item, adopting a resolution approving sales and disposition of agreement between the city and Burt Fugate slash Burt E. Fugate Trust for the Cook Street Mixed Juice Apartment Project. Staff report will be made by Mr. Wu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, this presentation is for the sales and disposition agreement for Cook Street Apartments. I would note that this is a project that was previously approved through a downtown permit by the council, but I'll go over some of the background details again. This project is located at the northeast corner of Cook Street and McClellan, just right across the street from City Hall. These are some basic information about the Cook Street Apartment Project. It's on a small site, about 0.69 acres. It's a six-story building, 70 feet in height, total of about 52,000 square feet, and as part of this negotiated agreement, there is a proposed ground-floor commercial space, in particular a restaurant, and there are 104 residential apartment units that's a part of this project. The, this is a site plan of the project site. Again, it's a small site, adjacent to the mall parking structure. The area that's highlighted in yellow, that's currently a city parcel. The property that's owned by the app, by the property owner is in the blue. And so just to step back a little bit about, and to talk about downtown, as you're aware, the city, we've been trying to revitalize downtown area and to introduce new uses, new housing, new commercial uses. You're aware of our efforts with Vernon Group on a couple of the sites in downtown, but this is not to be forgotten, this particular parcel by the Fugates. It's, what we're trying to do here is to make the most of available property, and so this is an area that is currently vacant, and we're looking at all the vacant opportunities to see what uses or what new projects we can bring to the downtown area to activate that space. And so the property in and of itself is very narrow and challenging to build, and there was a recognition that if they were to expand their site, which includes a sliver of the city's property, that they would have a much better project as opposed to just building on the very narrow piece that's adjacent to Cook Street. And so we've been working cooperatively with the applicant to expand on this project site so that there could be a superior project. This particular piece of land, in and of itself, the city doesn't have too much value. It's narrow, it's adjacent to the city parking structure, but we believe that if we work together with the adjacent property owner, that you can build something that's a little bit nicer, a little bit bigger. More elevations, again, you've seen this a couple of months ago when this went through the planning entitlement process, and here's another elevation, and here's a side elevation. I'll go through a little bit more about the components of the development agreement. So again, back in 2022, the city council declared this property or the strip of land surplus. In November of 2023, the city council approved the downtown permit for the Cook Street Apartments. And the downtown permit was approved contingent upon the applicant entering into this sales and disposition agreement. The main deal point of this agreement is the exchange of the land for about 2,000 square feet of ground-floor restaurant use. Initially, this project was proposed as all apartments, and staff felt that there was a great opportunity to introduce a restaurant use right at the corner of McClellan and Cook, somewhere to go after council meetings. And so, so that's really the main deal point. There is a 50% fee incentive on building permit fees. This is allowed through the downtown specific plan, and I'll note that the applicant would work with a developer or could turn the property over to a developer for the construction of the site. There was a supplemental memo that was passed out to the council, and they are some minor modifications to the development agreement after this was posted, and so you should have that in front of you. And so the recommendation to the council includes the original recommendation with the additional edits, and I'll call out three of the edits. One of them is on page 10 of the draft agreement, and it clarifies the closing date and to tie that to the completion of the final map. So in order to, for the project site, to include the city's surplus land, there has to be a moving of some boundaries, some property boundaries, and that's through the map process. So the, this, there's language that talks about escrow and the closing date, and it was in error tied to the planning entitlements, but it should have been tied to a completion of the map. There on another page, on page 24, we included some language that clarifies the expiration of the development agreement, and that's four years from the execution of the agreement. That would provide a time for the applicant to obtain their financing and obtain their, and to go through the permitting process. And then there's a removal of some language regarding off-site infrastructure that was no longer needed. So this concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation is to approve the sales and disposition agreement between the city of Santa Maria and the Burt Fugate and the Burt Fugate Trust with the additional edits as described. This concludes staff's presentation. Welcome. Any questions you may have?
Any questions of Mr. Wu? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If we go back to the map, can we go a little bit? Yeah, that one.
Before, the other, the one that has like the bridge. So the, the land where we're talking is the one where right under that bridge or connection to the, uh, to the parking. Is that right?
Councilmember Escobedo, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. And, uh, in regards, uh, parking, what has been the, uh, how's that been, uh, discussed? Present.
Through the downtown permit process, uh, and with the agreement, uh, there's commitment to make sure that there's avail, there's available parking within the town center parking structure to serve the site. So, that, that's within the downtown permit and in this agreement, that the parking would be available to serve the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Wu? Okay. Um, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
I believe Lori Tamara would like to speak.
Good evening. Uh, Lori Tamara with Urban Planning Concepts, representing the Fugate family. Um, as you consider this project and the agreement before you, please keep in mind that it's a very unique and innovative project. It takes two properties, one that the applicant has owned for over 50 years, and the remnant piece of about 10,000 square feet that the city owns, which is, both are essentially unusable unless they're planned together. This confined property will be a showcase for the city. It has gone through an extensive process through the Surplus Lands Act, uh, which was 90 days of review by the state and, uh, the city and the other agencies that might be interested in this little sliver of land. And, um, also went through the downtown permit review process and was approved unanimously by the planning commission in November. So, uh, the discretionary review for the development plan or the downtown permit has been completed. As you move through your approval tonight for this agreement, um, the project can become a reality. This is basically the next step for, uh, the, uh, work that needs to be done to make this project a reality. We appreciate the staff's time. Uh, Martin Luther King Day was a little bit of a hiccup there, so we were able to have an opportunity to meet with Chung and Tom to go over some of the questions that we had. Uh, and, um, we hope that you will agree that they're reasonable requests for, uh, the agreement. And that you move forward tonight to approve the project. And this will be a monumental, um, step for the Fugate family and for this piece of property and for the city of Santa Maria. So, um, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions of Ms. Tamara?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any for, any other requests to speak?
We have no further requests.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this, uh, I'll bring this item back to the council for discussion. Motion? Oh, Mr. Escobedo?
Yeah, just, uh, going back to the, to the parking structure, so, uh, basically, we got a, we get a parking that is underutilized. So I see, I see where this project can benefit out of, uh, out of that. And, um, I would just like to put it up there to see how, uh, you know, they will, a private entity will be using some of the parking that, uh, it's from the public. So I think that just be mindful of that. I actually, uh, I would be in, uh, supporting of, uh, of this, uh, of this resolution, of the recommendation. But I, for future, I think that's a, because today we're not voting for the project as, as it is. We're just, if I'm right, is that correct? We're just voting for this parcel.
Uh, this is for the sales and disposition agreement.
Correct. So yeah, just moving forward, just keep that in mind where we're going, uh, you know, moving, moving along. And, uh, I would, uh, I would make that a, a motion to approve this, uh, recommendation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
Councilmember Regulata Hernandez.
Aye.
Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a regular business item to receive a status update on the mobile home model lease program. Staff report is to be made by Mr. Wu.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a status update on the mobile home model lease. On June 7th, uh, 2022, the city council met to discuss the mobile home model lease 2020 agreement and to receive public input. Following city council discussion and public input, a motion direction was given to staff to work with the community members and park owners to examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if there is room for improvement and to look for alternatives. Following city council directions, city staff held several meetings with community members to identify areas of improvement and to look for alternatives. We held six meetings, some with park owner representatives, some with rep, resident representatives, and with the last meeting being an all stakeholder meeting with residents and park owner res, uh, representatives and city representatives. The last meeting was on November 14th, uh, 2023. Uh, there were items that park owner representatives and resident representatives agreed on. Uh, but there remain fundamental differences between the two groups. Uh, with residents, uh, sharing that they still have an interest in rent stabilization and park owners, uh, sharing, uh, being against that. But there are a few issues that we honed in on in terms of the model lease agreement. In particular, uh, participation, outreach, and enforcement. So I'll, I'll cover each of these, uh, issues, um, in a little bit more detail. Uh, this slide, uh, the numbers are a little bit small here on this slide. Uh, but the, the city, the park owners, um, and residents, uh, we, there's emphasis on park owners participating in the model lease. This is a list, uh, of parks, uh, broken into three categories. Uh, there's a category of parks that are signed and participating. Uh, there's a category of parks that have expressed a commitment to participate in the model lease, uh, but we don't have an executed agreement. And then there's a list of parks that have not yet signed and have, are not participating in the model lease. So, uh, you can see the numbers here, uh, six parks that are signed and participating, uh, representing, uh, 1,068 mobile home spaces and roughly about 69% of the total mobile home park spaces. Uh, there are in addition of four mobile home parks that have, uh, stated their commitment, uh, to participate in the model lease. Uh, I'll just note that, uh, New Love and Ranchwood, uh, we do have, uh, their signatures. And we will be, uh, collecting city signatures, uh, for the execution of that agreement. And then there's a list of, uh, parks that are not yet signed. In our discussions with the stakeholders, park owners and resident groups, uh, there was agreement that, uh, better outreach could be conducted. Uh, in my discussions with the stakeholder groups, I also committed, uh, to, uh, on behalf of the city to also help in these outreach efforts. And so, uh, part of these outreach efforts include, uh, assistance to disseminate information and to educate the public about the model lease program. Uh, this could include in-person and virtual meetings, uh, letters to mobile home park residents, uh, posting of information on the city's website, and translation of letters and educational materials, uh, but not contractual materials in Spanish. Uh, we would help in the formation of an outreach committee that will provide guidance and direction on ongoing outreach efforts. On the topic of enforcement, uh, the model lease is enforced by civil remedy. Uh, we've received, uh, one complaint, uh, which has been sufficiently remedied. There was discussion of making information available in outreach communications on how homeowner can make a complaint to the city regarding possible violations of the model lease program. There was also agreement between the two parties to amend paragraph 2.2 of the enforcement agreement that would require the model lease to be offered to new buyers at the same time as any other lease agreement. Uh, right now, there's some language, uh, about 60 days, uh, but, uh, that's, that's too wide of, of a range and would not ensure that this would be, uh, presented at the same time as, uh, any other lease agreement. There was discussion on reporting to the city annually, uh, how many residents have signed a model lease, and also discussion of a creation of volunteer committee of resident and park owner representatives to address any issues prior to a complaint filed with the city. On financial terms, uh, stakeholders groups did not discuss financial terms. The park owner groups emphasize that they have entered into a binding agreement and have complied with its terms. Uh, the two groups, uh, did discuss the potential of mobile home parks voluntarily providing financial assistance that could aid residents experiencing hardship. Uh, in summary, the 2020 model lease program provides another lease option for prospective mobile home residents. Uh, we held meetings over the past year and a half to obtain input on how the program could be improved and to look for alternatives. Improved efforts in participation, outreach, and enforcement would help prospective residents, including seniors. Uh, this concludes, uh, staff's update. Uh, welcome, any questions you may have?
Any questions of Mr. Wu?
I do.
Yeah, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, China, when, I remember the meeting pretty well on, I, did you say 2022? It's quite a while ago. And what I recall asking for was for it to be reviewed to see whether we could adjust it to make it any better. And I have to ask you here, uh, if your office is made whatever investigation or whatever adjustments you can make that the city can, can, can live with or accommodate. Has that happened? As far as you can tell me what, what you can do, and I'm sure that you're working with the city attorney as well, but...
Yes, uh, Councilmember Cordero, uh, in, so I'll, I'll note, uh, there were, uh, other city staff that were involved early in the process. Uh, I did come in after the, um, departure of the prior assistant city manager. Uh, but in looking at the options, uh, short of having rent stabilization or rent control, it's, it's really the model lease and, and how, uh, the mod, the current model lease could be improved. So, and that's through outreach and that's through enforcement. And so, it's really looking at the, uh, existing, uh, model lease and making a good effort to make sure that it's being made available to residents and making sure that, uh, they're sufficiently informed of their options.
Okay, so you're, you've done what you believe you can do from your office, and I would assume that the city attorney would concur with that. Okay. This has been a long time, and we've been listening to this gentleman come to our council meetings, almost every council meeting. I have to commend him for his fortitude for those things. But whatever it takes to end this needs to be ended. And I prefer that it be ended at this meeting tonight, that it, 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 if there's, if we've done what we can do, then we need to move on so that everyone knows what the end result is going to be. And, and if the end result is that we are here tonight with what you just said, then so be that as the end result. But to continue on and putting people through this for, um, another two or three years is, is, is counterproductive and I think, um, almost abusive to this gentleman here who's been excellent at showing up and, and, and speaking their piece. So, so if we're done, then I suggest that we take whatever steps we need to end this as a question for the Santa Maria City Council. Is that clear, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything we've done or not done that the, the city attorney can help us with? Well, he's, that, that we're finished? We've done what we can do, so...
In, in fairness, uh, it really was the party's determination to come to an agreement. And they have done so, and we facilitated to the best of our ability.
Okay, I, I just, I just, I, I'm more in favor of the market setting the, the limits. And I think that we've, we've, we've tried to accommodate and short of making legislation to it, I, I don't know what else we can do. And, and we need to, we need to get on with, uh, other city business and, and, uh, and, and end this as, as, as a project for, for us and for your office.
So, uh, council member, uh, I'll just note that, um, there will be continued outreach efforts.
Yes.
Uh, the park owners, um, the representatives of park owners have, are still actively, uh, asking the non-participating parks to try to participate in a model lease. So, uh, perhaps not before the city council, but at a staff level and at a staff level, working with the stakeholder groups. Uh, there, there likely will still be some ongoing efforts.
Yeah, and I think we should support that, and we, that, that's not a problem. But, but, uh, but as far as, as far as trying to enact legislation, uh, I think that's outside the bounds of good sense for any organization, actually. So, is that, and if I stand corrected, uh, then please, uh, correct me and I'll beat you up later. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, any questions of Mr. Wu? Okay, you have a question or, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question, um, how many other, uh, all the mobile parks are only for seniors? Do we have an estimate?
Uh, Councilmember Escobedo, I actually, I, I don't have that information. I have information about the total number of parks, which is 15, and the total number of spaces, which is about 1,500. Uh, the representatives of the park owners may have a little bit more information.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I have several requests to speak, and I'll start with Gary Hall, followed by Jared Gonzalez, followed by Lisa Toak, followed by Baron McGee. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. As always, I came with a prepared statement. But what I just heard, I didn't understand, and with your lenience, I'll let, I, I hope to cover that as I go through what I did prepare. To think that this is concluded is, is really not appropriate. Let me just go through it and see if I can answer some of those issues. Uh, you already know I'm Gary Hall, so I won't say that again. Our overarching goal remains from the beginning to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current rent model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. Stopping tonight, that won't make any improvement on achieving that goal. Let me go on to say that I, I continue to thank... Let me go on to say that I continue to thank Councilmember Cordero and Escobedo and Soto for passing the resolution which Mr. Wu has already described, and that was to examine the model lease agreement, which we haven't done, looking for ways to improve it, which we haven't done, and to look at alternatives, which we haven't done. I want to thank interim Assistant City Manager for the time and effort he has already made in attending the stakeholder meeting and presenting this status update. We believe this is a thorough report of the activity only over the last 18 months, which has not proven too much. What the mobile home residents would like to remind everyone are these five facts that I've itemized. One, the 2019 model lease enforcement agreement was prepared by the city and the park owners without any input, any input from us. Which, again, we had no input in. Increasing park participation, which has been the emphasis, now is really irrelevant if there are no beneficial incentives in the terms of the model lease.
Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. For residents to even want to participate. One of our January 2023 original stated goals was to adequately protect homeowners from large rent increases and maintain affordable housing while providing the park owners with a fair return. Rent subsidies that's now being discussed might help the very poor, but a broader rent increase restriction will help all of us residents to avoid becoming one of those very poor. Over 100 other California jurisdictions have enacted effective, effective rent stabilization ordinances and programs, providing their mobile home park residents with protection, the protection we seek, from excessive rent increases and in that way, help to maintain affordable housing for their senior and low-income residents. We continue to ask the City of Santa Maria to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Gonzalez, followed by Lisa Toak, followed by Baron McGee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Jared Gonzalez. I represent the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association, or WMA. WMA is a statewide trade association that represents mobile home park owners and operators in the state of California. In 2017, mobile home park owners in Santa Maria dutifully came to the table in collaboration with park residents and the city and spent nearly two years working toward a resolution, which is the current model lease agreement. Park owners and residents met several times and made compromises in exchange for 10 years of certainty, stability, and peace of mind, and that includes a clause that says there's no rent control during this 10-year period. The terms of the model lease were negotiated in good faith by all stakeholders, with city playing a critical role as facilitator. And despite all of this, residents requested meetings and attempt to make changes to the agreement. But like before, park owners came to the table to listen and to participate in discussions. And while the park owners remain vehemently against revisiting the financial terms of the model lease agreement, park owners have been open to city-driven model lease awareness effort and a made-up commitment to double down on their outreach efforts to encourage other parks to sign the agreement. Before recent meetings commenced, as the Assistant City Manager mentioned, 69% of all mobile home spaces participated in the program. Since then, our good-faith efforts have yielded four additional park commitments: New Love, Ranchwood, Riverside, and La Maria. New Love and Ranchwood have submitted and signed the agreements, as reported earlier today, and I'm happy to announce that Rancho and La Maria have signed the agreement and will be turning in to the city. This is a huge victory and would equal 85% of all spaces' participation. The model lease agreement works. It's meant as a backstop, and very few park residents even opt to sign and use the model lease. Why? Because park owners and residents almost always come to agreeable terms that are fair for one another. Park owners have gone above and beyond to keep their end of the bargain, and we ask the city do the same and ensure that there are no additional changes or further action to the model lease agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lisa Toak, followed by Baron McGee, followed by Mike Judge.
Good evening, Mayor Patino. City Council members and city staff, my name is Lisa Toak, and I represent Casa Grande, Rancho Buena Vista, and Casa del Rio, the three largest mobile home parks in Santa Maria. I apologize for my companion here, but it's a crutch for the cough that I can't seem to get rid of this winter. Hope I won't need it. My clients have done everything they were asked to do with regard to the enforcement agreement and the model lease. More specifically, they attended each and every meeting that took place for over a year in 2018 and 2019. They signed and complied with the enforcement agreement and the model lease, with the exception of one complaint that was resolved immediately upon being presented to them. They also have participated in each and every meeting that took place in 2022 and 2023 — I knew it would happen — to revisit the enforcement agreement and the model lease. My clients and the other participating park owners stand ready to finalize the details that they have negotiated with the other stakeholders to enhance and adjust the enforcement agreement and model lease, and I stand here tonight prepared to answer any questions that the council might have about those adjustments and enhancements. What my clients and the other participating park owners are not willing to do is renegotiate the terms of the enforcement agreement and model lease, the financial terms of the enforcement agreement and model lease, nor are they willing to discuss a rent control ordinance, either citywide or with regard to the non-participating park owners. My clients, again, have done everything that they said they would do with regard to the enforcement agreement and model lease, and now it's time for the other stakeholders to hold up their end of the bargain and bring this to a close. Thank you.
Thank you. Baron McGee, and followed by Mike Judge.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's Baron McGee. I represent Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Home Park. I had a prepared speech, but what Gary said really took me. We negotiated so hard for so long. I know, Madam Mayor, you were a part of those negotiations, and I can tell you, there were 18 items just in the first part of the negotiations we went over, and in almost every case, we gave. I'm going to give you an example here. We were pressed, we wanted to maintain the Metropolitan CPI Index, which almost most all park owners here have for decades. We were forced or requested by the residents to change to a different index, which is called the Western Cities Index. That's actually come out higher than had we have stayed with the original index, but that was not our doing. We wanted to keep the original index. We have worked so hard. It really threw me with Gary. I know that they always like to tell you that the city should join the over 100 municipalities or jurisdictions in California that have mobile home park rent control, but they never mention the over 330 other jurisdictions that don't have rent control or those that have adopted it and repealed it or modified it. It is our position that it just doesn't work. They've also mentioned that residents claim that they're stuck in their homes. When their rents increase beyond their means, they're simply untrue. Their homes are assets, and in many cases, valuable assets that they can sell on the open market. I know I've presented in the past meetings all kinds of numbers that I was able to pick up from the Realtor Board on actual sales, and at one point in Rancho Buena Vista, the time on market was easily equivalent to any single-family resident home within weeks. I'm sure that slipped a little now with interest rates doubling, but nevertheless, it's a very marketable asset. And when residents sell their homes, they receive 100% of the proceeds. The park owners receive no monetary benefits whatsoever, yet the residents are advocating to limit rents, the monetary benefit the park owners receive with a rent control ordinance. Again, I don't think that's fair, but we've previously described rent control ordinances in Santa Maria as a negative trifecta of unnecessary expense and ineffectiveness. Please allow the residents and park owners to continue their history of contracting with one another with the enforcement agreement and model lease that we worked so hard on and have adjusted and enhanced over the past year as the backstop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Judge.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I represent Casa Grande Mobile Home Park. I'd just like to bring up a couple points. The model lease, when we got into it, was always supposed to be a backstop. We have been negotiating leases now for 33 years, and we have very few people who are on the model lease, and that's only because we have actually negotiated leases with the tenants, and we've negotiated back and forth, and people feel that the lease that we've negotiated is very similar to the model lease, but we have certain areas where ours is actually better, and that's the one that they have chosen for the most part. In the 33 years that we've had the model lease program operational, the vast majority of our rent increases have been 3%. We've had a few that are a little bit higher or a little bit lower, but the vast majority is 3%, and we have a hard time believing that that is considered to be unreasonable. We've had some complaints that upon people moving and selling their homes, that we have an increase. In Casa Grande, it's 5% upon sale. I want to point out that that's maximum once every five years. So if a home, you know, is sold a couple times within a five-year period, we only do it once. And at the same time, if somebody lives in that home for 30 years, they will never have that increase. It's only upon sale, and so we have some homes in the park that have maybe sold once in all those years. Last point, it's, we do have a small number of tenants who have had financial difficulties. It's not anything that we've created, but, you know, there are people who have bad times, still have a sickness in the family, a spouse will die, and they do have financial hardship. We try to work with those people. We will continue to try to work with those people, and our objective is to have a park that's full and people living in it. It's not to try to remove those type of people. We do work with them and try to keep them happy within the park, and those are my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bring this back to the council. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Cordero.
Do you know of any cases where the model lease that the city's involved with, where we have used the model lease to separate them from their residents at all? Is there any one? So, the model lease has never been used for anything like that, or it's never happened as far as we know? Is that correct?
Councilmember, I'm not aware.
Okay. I think we're, I think we're done with this, Madam Mayor.
And this was, this item was to receive a status update on the mobile home model lease program.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Okay, no other questions? Okay. The next item will be a report by interim city manager, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Busy agenda tonight, and I want to thank you for taking the time to go through these items.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Question, can I make a comment before we move to staff report?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just, I just want to express that I'm happy that there has been some improvements on, a lot of conversation will be part of it, and there's an openness to overcome issues and challenges during this negotiation. I'm still on the belief that rent control is the appropriate, and I know that I wouldn't have to support my fellow councilmembers, but I just wanted to express that I keep it on the record, and I am looking forward to see one day something like that happening in Santa Maria. Thank you.
Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, just to recap real quickly, we left on the dais a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development acknowledging our housing element being accepted by the state, so I want to thank the staff at Community Development for their efforts in getting that moved forward. There are many must-dos on that letter as you review it, but I think the staff is up to that challenge. The other item on the dais is a magazine article from Western Cities that talks about essential tips for effective council meetings. We've shared this with the department directors and staff so that we all have good and productive meetings, so I appreciate their support in reviewing that document. For your next meeting coming up on February the 6th, we will have another closed session at 4:30. That will be dealing with labor negotiations. You'll have a couple of proclamations, Black History Month, and 2-1, one day. You'll have the annual code compliance report, and Recreation and Parks will be presenting the hometown heroes for this cycle. Those banners are up already. We're going to invite the families in for council recognition. You'll also be looking at a donation to the police department from the police council. We'll be looking, hopefully, we'll be seeing a purchase and sale agreement for the Blosser Ranch Sports Complex parcel. We hope to bring that back to you then. Pledge for Revenue Agreement with CalRecycle coming out from the utility staff. These will be on your consent calendar. And the annual fire department report is scheduled to come back to you. Those will be your big highlights for February the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Next item is oral reports of council members. Shall we start with you, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended a community meeting, a communi-fi meeting in Solvang. I'm happy to report that I was actually unaware of this, but the building that they're in has some serious, it's in Galita, has some concerns, and they're moving to a much more spacious and accommodating facility in downtown Santa Barbara. I think it's on Coda and Anacapa Street, and that should be taking, hopefully, taking place later this year. I attended the celebration for Martin Luther King at the library over the weekend. I attended the celebration for Martin Luther King at the library over the weekend, and it was entertaining. It's always entertaining. I got the opportunity to listen to the new superintendent, or I guess he's not new anymore, Mr. McDuffie. I learned that he is a cousin to a past Miami Dolphin player, McDuffie, which was interesting. And he did a rendition of, a reenactment of one of Dr. Martin Luther King's speeches, which I thought he did quite well. I also attended a special meeting at the CCWA, and it was a closed-session meeting, so there's not much I can say about that. And that's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last, this last Friday, 12, I met with Tom and Eric about the airport item, and also just want to make sure that I make myself clear about when I said rent control is just rent control for mobile home. That's the one I was referring to, just, again, for the record, and that's all, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Aguilar Hernandez.
Yes, I attended the Community Services Board for Marion Hospital, and I also attended the Women Lawyers Association event.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see, December 19th, went to a badge-pinning ceremony at our police department, and December 21st, attended the longest night. On January 4th, I attended the CalCities Housing Policy Committee orientation. I'm on the CalCities for the state housing policy. And January 7th, I attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds. On the 10th of January, I attended the North County Subregional Planning Committee, and that's made up of mayors from Lompoc, Solvang, Guadalupe, Santa Maria, and Galita. And on the 14th, I attended, again, the California Alliance of Local Electeds and attended the Martin Luther King Celebration at Lavenino Plaza, along with councilmember Cordero. And yesterday, I was interviewed by the grand jury, and I think that is it. And, yeah, this meeting is adjourned.